Everyone have a chance to look at minutes from our previous meeting? Any corrections, additions, or anything like that? Jeff now will take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tonight's agenda, does anyone have anything to add to that tonight? Now we'll take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll move.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move right into Jeff Shai. He's here. Is it you or a friend or something you were saying for that property over there with the old Catholic church?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know, I guess what do you got for us if we could?
Well, tell me where we are. I have no idea. I just thought, I know that you're trying to do something with it to get it fixed up a little bit and whatnot, and we certainly clean up, landscape it, and eventually put a shop on it.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Yeah, I was kind of holding up, we were kind of holding up. These trees is supposed to take out those two big cottonwoods.
Yep.
And I talked to Marilyn yesterday, and she's tried to call him and he doesn't respond. So we could finish.
Welcome to my world. I tried to get him to take down that maple tree back too, but he...
Did he ever get back to you at all?
He did once. He called and said, "Well, when I come over and take a look at those cottonwoods, I'll take a look at yours." And that was, how long ago was that? So, it was a couple of months, right?
Yep.
So, I don't know.
Okay, I don't know what you guys' thoughts are. I sent you, was it twenty-eight hundred and some change?
Yes.
On the assessments?
Yes, sir.
And you guys are aware of them? It's just a matter of, I guess, what you guys think you want for the property itself. Is that correct?
Yeah. I need to know the bottom line and what's owed on it. I can't assume there's any taxes on it, right?
We pay them.
So it's just the assessments?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-eight hundred dollars.
But I know we got some money in the tearing it down and all that stuff, but, I mean, can't just let shit.
Probably tear it down anyway, so.
Exactly.
Well, that's just good. I don't think we'll ever see that, or more expect to see that, so.
It should be nice to have something there instead of sitting vacant again. Do you have like a number in mind you were thinking?
No, I came here wide open, so.
What are you guys thinking?
I'm pretty flexible.
Well, if they're putting a structure on the house, I think we should just basically give them the property. You know, if they're putting a structure onto the property.
One hundred percent that's.
And then they'd have to pick up the remaining special, which is, what, seventeen years? Or you could pay them off, one or the other.
The twenty-eight hundred you're talking about?
Yep.
Yeah.
The annual would probably be what?
That's kind of what I was doing, or something like that. Thinking as well, you know, that way you can make up some of that.
We'll certainly take care of that, no problem.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or? Oh, sure, yeah. Any other discussion on it, or just?
Everybody okay with it?
Well, I think so, yeah.
You guys saying for a dollar then, or what?
I think you get some, some.
Right, so.
Yep, true.
I would fifty dollars something.
Fine.
Just sold to fifty bucks.
Okay.
That would cover the title transfer, the deed, I mean.
It's about one-seventy-five. It's one-seventy-five for quick claim deed.
That's fine. Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, then we could leave it up to them to cover the costs.
So what are we gonna do about the trees? Are you gonna let him take over the tree issue, or?
They're on Marilyn's property.
Okay. Oh, they are on Marilyn's?
They are on Marilyn's. And Marilyn, Dave Zern quoted her a price and she agreed.
Oh, I see, so that has nothing to do with that?
She agreed to it. I just thought, rather than go in and try to level it, and it's really hard to bring that, there's a hump there where the trees are setting. Once the trees will be out of there, I could bring that hump down.
I see.
Well, if you guys wanted to make a motion for fifty dollars and then, whatever it costs to get title and deed and everything transferred over. Is that good with you then?
Yes, sir.
A second then?
I think Jeff, I think I'll grant.
A second. All in favor? Okay. Anything else for us, or if you do, just call one of us or come to next meeting and get it done, so.
Thank you very much, guys.
Yep, thank you.
While you're talking about the property, I have Scott Cowell.
Thanks, Jeff.
I don't know what he used to own up there. He's looking for a piece of property to put a double wire or something. And the only one I think we have is that corner one down there, correct? So maybe start thinking, I'm gonna give him a call back and tell him I found one, but start thinking about what you want to do for down there.
Yeah, I met with a guy from Wisconsin.
Oh, okay.
On Saturday, but he's thinking of building a house. But it's gonna take a lot of fill. He wanted to get at least the elevation of the alley, which,
Oofda.
You know, would take a lot of fill, and I think he's not interested.
Wow. Well, is that twenty feet?
That's good, that's a long lead.
When we were standing, we were probably, I would say down from the alley about forty feet. And I'd say it's about six feet deep there, and it gets, there's more.
That's insane.
I think overall, if you want to go way to the west end, you'd be at about ten feet.
No, that's insane.
No driveway. Okay, yeah, well, have them contact us or come to a meeting or something.
I'll have them contact me.
Okay. All right, Bill, what do you got for us?
I got this lead and copper survey thing. This is what Moore Engineering got the results back from the lead and copper survey that everybody had. Right now, we have all unknowns, which, I don't get it, but, an unknown is, they know what's inside the house. They don't know what is from the main to the house. It could be copper inside the house, but they don't know what's the rest of the line, the service line is. That's why it's an unknown. We have one lead line in here. We went over there and looked at it. What it is is a ninety. And it's a galvanized ninety, and they consider that a lead line. Even though the actual service line is not lead, but if you have a ninety or an elbow or coupler, whatever, that's galvanized, or most of that old stuff had lead in it, it's considered a lead line. From eighteen inches on either side of the meter. So, it's kind of hard to follow.
So how is every single one of them? Isn't it sticking through the floor or the wall, or you can?
You can see it. You can see the line coming in, but they don't know what's underground. That's what they're worried about.
So they're.
They have a lead line from, or galvanized line from the main to the curb stop, but from the curb stop to the house could be copper. But it's still considered a lead line.
If it's unknown?
If it's from the main to the house, yeah.
So then what?
Well, there's grant money out there for replacement lines.
Digging up ninety-nine percent of it?
That one, and we told the guy, we're on that one over there to the house. And all he has to do is change out that ninety.
Okay.
Then it'll go to an unknown.
Sure.
But the next step after this is an unknown. I have no idea what their plan is.
That one sheet had a deadline, Dave, right?
Yep. It has to be out.
I guess he's just glad everybody wants unknown in the hole.
We have the one lead line that I got here. The, I don't know, the guy, we got copies of it, but all these unknown, we have to mail them out to these residents. But everything is on here. You can kind of read through it. I put the city's number on here to call.
All unknown.
The city call, because I really don't want my cell number getting out there. Everybody has it, but I have to go up to the school. And Mark has to send this letter out to all the parents. Because there's the school's an unknown too. Even though it's a two-inch copper line coming into the school that you can see clear as day.
So is everything unknown? Like every, every, everything?
Except for that one.
So we all wasted time looking at the, in the house and looking at that thing off?
I agree with you. There's so many towns that are just like, what are we doing?
What did you even bother doing?
I know. I did a lot of footwork to get to the point where it's like.
Okay.
I, when I was at the League of Cities convention, three weeks ago, whatever it was, there was one breakout session. And that was one of the issues that came up. What do we do? Stephanie, the attorney for the League of Cities, was right up front and said, "Nobody knows." "I'm questioning, should we even bother to send letters?" Because my statement was that, during that discussion, I said, "Why are we sending letters out to people and alarming them over something that we don't even know exists?" And secondly, and we didn't budget for all these letters going out. So why are we doing it? And Stephanie, basically, put her hands up and said, "Nobody knows." And I don't remember Tom Cabundy was, no, not Tom. Jared, if he was in the room, I think he was in the back. I know there was someone behind me that spoke up. So it sounds to me like, basically, I think a lot of cities are just ignored.
We better just let it percolate a little bit, and wait till.
I agree. The deadline, where's that?
Oh, there is a deadline.
And what's it say?
I have to fill out what? To send back into the state.
What's the deadline for? I don't understand what the deadline is for.
What we did, whether we hand-delivered it, or if we mailed it, what we did at the school, what the school did with it.
Can't we just put it around like we do when we get our reports, like at the post office?
Nope.
Got to be each person?
It's got to be each person.
What's it cost to send out letters to every single resident?
I just did that here for our rubber study. I've sent out two-hundred-and-thirty-something, but those had to be double stamped. One going out to them, and I had to have a shelter address stamped in.
What you're saying?
But I, last year I did buy all them stamps real cheap, so I have rolls and rolls of stamps.
I don't want to get involved with the deadline issue either.
You know who the trouble is? If we alarm the people, I hate it because we're gonna screw up such an order.
I've had so many calls just from the rate study. So many calls. Why do we have to do this? Why do they need to know anything?
Well, I agree with what you're saying. If we can't, I'm with you on it. But if you're saying that we have a deadline, what are we gonna do?
Maybe I should give Stephanie a call and ask her.
You definitely wouldn't be a bad idea.
We got this deadline, but we don't want to alarm our residents when y'all don't even know what you can do for us. And see what she tells me we have to. And if she has, we have to, then we're not gonna help. Bill, can you make me a copy just in case?
Copy of what?
What's gotta be sent out.
And all rate letters, check it out. Here's a copy of the, I just don't understand.
I'll call Stephanie and ask her.
It seems like they don't even know how to catch what's beyond that.
Will you make copies, I can read it better later too, please, about whoever makes them. I just think it's ridiculous.
These are both the same here, right?
So far, I'm understanding it correctly, like when I went down. I knew my line coming in was copper. Like me going down, checking.
So I only send this letter to one person and then unknown to everybody else?
Because I can't see that with my own two eyes.
Assuming there could be a. How do you have a galvanized?
Well, after I talked to Stephanie.
How could you have anything hooked to a copper line? How does that one?
Yeah, I mean, what would you do, solder on, like a mail it after?
That's right.
That's right.
I didn't. You're gonna have to. I think maybe you're a cop. You mail it after, you do.
But it's stupid. It seems like a lot of regular work to try and put the red line into your water. It's like they sent all that out and you don't even know, because you're not. Yeah, it's like.
It's your fucking foundation.
Yeah, nobody has, you know, lines.
And you think like very close. I'm nearly one hundred percent in part of it. This is probably all the way from the main line to the house, you know, door there.
Right, that was.
Now you just don't know. Yeah, since you can't see it with your own two eyes or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's put it there.
Well, we have until November fifteenth, so let's just try and get more information by next meeting, and then we'll have time to send them off to meet our deadline, right? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
And this is a federal deal?
This is.
EPA.
The EPA.
I guess it's an EPA.
So they can't just basically disregard it.
They are, I mean, they are, they started doing some stuff in Bismarck as far as testing what the line is. They can go inside the house or the building, whatever. Can go out so far and scrape the top of the line, or, you know, bottom side, whatever. And they pull it back, then they can test it that way. The only thing with that is, you are compromising that line.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, doesn't make any sense. We can't go and dig up every single residence.
No, that's where the state is at too. They don't even know what's going on. What the next step is going to be. Moore Engineering doesn't know what the next step is gonna be.
All right, yeah, we'll just get some more information next meeting. We'll address it if we have to. Maybe they'll have more information by then.
Right, yeah. Sounds like Tom and Terry are gonna start on the roof here, hopefully this week.
Tomorrow.
Would be all right if after it's all steel, or puts steel on, maybe for next year, see what it costs to put gutters on. John Klein here has got a machine. I've talked to a couple people that he's done jobs for, and they seem pretty satisfied with them, as far as the gutters.
Have never seen this.
Never seen this good. Just to get a bid, just to see what it would be, unless you want to go with something different.
Okay.
If that'd be something that you guys would be interested in or not.
With that lee, a slight lee side.
You know, put that side shoot part all the way around, but.
Okay.
I'd say get a bid, yeah.
Because we do get water that comes in down in this corner down here. From the, you get a hard one here. Tom and I took the brass in for millimeters. That big barrel that we had out here, we got seven-hundred-and-some odd dollars for it. So we'll stick that towards a couple meters or something.
Okay.
And CDL thing, I looked into it. I haven't started on it yet, but we'll get that ball rolling there.
Okay.
I don't know what it's gonna cost yet, I guess, but, I'll think it more or less depending on how many times you gotta take the written part over and the driving part over and stuff, so.
Can they make you find your own trucks like they used to?
I would say, yeah.
Because if you need a truck, let us know. You can test and have ours.
Get the automatic one?
We could do that too. We got one of them for you. I hate it.
Do you have a strategy?
It's gonna be a Class B.
Yeah.
You know, it's not gonna.
Yeah, and you can just take our ten liter, man. You can take one of our ten liters.
Yeah, right.
You don't even take the semi, you know, just something that's got, you know, air brakes and whatever.
For your Class B.
You're welcome to do that.
Let me know what you find out, Bill, too, because we're looking. There's one where you can go for like a week in the time you're, Monday through Friday, by Friday you're gonna have everything you need, license, everything.
Oh, wow. Where is that in, James?
I'm trying to find out some now. We've got some farmers that have their drivers do it.
Well, so you'll find out more, let me know.
Yeah, we'll stay in touch on that. We're going through the same thing, so. Okay?
That's all I got.
Out of here, what you got?
Okay, you guys, the last meeting you was telling me I could take and pay out of the Prairie Dog money. I have bills here for three, last three times a D-Lo's game. It was nine-thousand-one-hundred-sixty-five dollars. I have one-thousand-eight-sixty-seven left. Now I have this bill here for three-thousand-eight-seventy-seven from the water break, all the gatebells and all that. And I want to know if I can take and clear this account out, make it a zero account, pay that on there, and then go into our regular account and pay this bill. Because the Prairie Dog, Prairie Dog will be fun with, done with them. Use this money, last money out for them. Okay. That's all I have.
Do you want Lauren and Bill to look this over then?
Um, yeah, they can. And then, don't you just give me the bill so I can send them it? And then they could put that back on my desk.
So I know I've looked through it before, and I don't know if we're missing something.
Oh, Bill, did you see those things left there for?
Or Bill, you just want to look through it and see if there's anything missing sometime, or get a chance to, yeah.
And then you just put it back on my desk, Bill, I'll.
Well, we haven't done anything new for a couple years. I think we should be okay, right? As far as equipment or anything?
The only thing, we'll get a, we'll only go into that pickup.
I think that's.
Now, you know, it's all.
I would take some of that, I think.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, you'd know better than any of us. Grant water sewer policing, you got anything?
I do not.
Jeff, high street sliding library?
I don't. Did they get that pavement down by Tom's fix as well? That Levan Hall issue?
No, border states haven't been here yet.
That border states had.
Yeah, that was a state that these.
This was just Highway fifty-six that did their thing, and it's nothing to do with us.
Oh, great.
Okay.
I should get ahold of them, get to see them again.
Yeah, we definitely want that buttoned up before winter, which is approaching.
Lean on me a little bit, Bill.
So you got that? I guess I haven't heard or seen any lights or anything.
Sometimes where I can raise. Yeah, they've been doing a pretty good job. They don't have too many left to change daily maintenance.
Perfect. Larry, you got anything?
Nope.
Lauren?
Nope.
All right, old business. Permit for Linda Presser House remodel. Gave you permit for Duckfest. How'd that go? Anyone here, by the way? I wasn't too big a chance to make it up to.
Wasn't.
Oh, okay. Seem like there's a lot of people around, of course. City properties, Renee Clark water around her house.
She never showed up, and she's never come back, so.
Yeah, we never looked at it. See if we get a chance.
Oh, I thought it looked like, see, I thought it looked like somebody had went down and went like this or something.
Dwayne Nelson did.
Okay.
And, you know, we were gonna set up a transit, just check once, how much drop we would have to work with. And we never did.
Did those papers from that study help you at all as far as elevations, or not really?
I really, I looked at them just briefly.
Yeah, I'm sure it's gonna be, yeah, okay.
According to that, I think there was on that paper, just glancing at it, there's a fair drop.
Is there?
And then when you guys are done with that paper, just stick it on my desk, I can file up that.
Okay.
In case you ever need it again.
All right, Niagara no fence permit, what did we come up with that? I guess I don't. Anyone know anything on that one?
Are you saying he put a fence up without a permit?
No, he got a permit. I don't know why I got no, the no there. He got a fence.
Oh, he got a.
For his new house over here.
Perfect.
And he was gonna take the old one down, but now that Nicole is renting it, and she's got a dog, he just kind of left it up for her.
Okay, I was wondering on that one, okay. Old position for Ardell. I guess I didn't see him or remember it, but.
I didn't think of it either. They were going on vacation, so.
Well, we'll just try to remember sometime, I guess, see what's going on there. It's about winter, we're not gonna be tearing anything. The income rate study, I haven't heard a thing on that, hopefully.
We got a lot of people sending them in. What'll happen now is after I got them all mailed out, he receives them up there, and then he'll put their name, I have a list that I sent them, of everybody I sent it to, and he'll just check off who sent them. And then he said he'd come down and go to people's houses, and I said, "Could I go over to their houses and talk to them?" You know, I just thought it'd probably be more received by me, explaining why we need this done. So as soon as he gives me that, then I'll go around and get people to fill them out with me personally.
But he's had a pretty good response so far.
And he said he's been getting quite a few, yeah.
All right. Anything else on old business you guys, or move on? New business, permit for Joel Zinker's driveway. Motion to.
Move to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gave you permit for Ducks Unlimited. Motion for that.
So, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Took care of the old church property. Getting ready for winter roads, cleaning up campers, boats, jet skis, trailer up roads. There's only a few things that we need to address, correct?
There's maybe five, maybe six. Lauren, if you'll show me, I'll have to remember where that ordinance is, so we can kind of give them to them. Because we usually do this in September, but the weather's been so nice, we want to do it now before the snow hits.
It could hit, yeah.
There's a couple campers and a couple boats and jet skis and stuff like that.
All right, yeah, we did one. Put that for it. All right, anything else for new business you guys?
I'll just say a little bit on, when I was at the convention, they had two breakout sessions on that measure number four. The property tax relief. You probably see a add-on TV of three-point-one-five billion. That's more or less the money that the fifty-two counties in North Dakota collect and redistribute. The Prairie Dog Fund, or the Legacy Fund, I should say, that's from the oil tax earnings, or oil tax, is actually, stands right now at about ten billion. What they're saying, more or less, and by the way, the earnings is what's getting redistributed already. That's where the tax credit, oh, for the low income. That's where their money is coming from. Or the city gets that tax money from the earnings of the Legacy Fund. So they're already giving tax relief in some ways. And they said, I think the threshold is gonna go from forty-one thousand to like seventy thousand on Home State Credit Act. The one session had a legislator, he's head of appropriations committee. He basically said they have no clue if the yes votes prevail, how they're gonna fund this. You know, they're saying federal, or income tax, sales tax. In that room, they took a survey, just a hand showing of towns. And I think the break was five-hundred and less. And, well, I raised my hand. And then they went down to a hundred and less, and there was quite a few hands that went up. I was surprised. You know, we can't raise our sales tax enough to make up the difference. And it's gonna be based, according to that measure, the way it's written, it's gonna be based on the 2024 budget. The state will refund us based on the 2024 budget. What they're not in that, there's nothing in that, no verbiage in that. What they're not in that, there's nothing in that, no verbiage in that measure, I guess, that allows for inflation. So by twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we're still gonna be getting the twenty-four budget. Um, there's one other thing I was gonna mention. And actually, I guess out of that three point one five billion, the majority of that is coming from commercial and industrial. The ag and the residential is like thirty-seven percent, I think it is. If I remember the numbers right. And it's the residential that's causing all the grief. And chances are, they said in most cases, it's the wealthy. Because they're the ones with the multimillion dollar homes and are getting, you know, paying a lot of property tax and don't want to. I was visiting with the mayor, I'm not gonna mention the town, but he's close to a larger city. He said, you know, they're equal, he asked me how our equalization meetings go. And I says, most of the time we sit there for an hour and stare at one another and go home. And he said theirs is a total nightmare. He said they had people coming in, they've got two lane bowling alley in the basement, they got a swimming pool. And he said they're raising royal heaven. They want their taxes lowered, their praise is valued too high. He says, what do you do? And those are the people that are really pushing this measure.
So what about your out of state people that have houses, are they pushing it to?
I don't think so. And the other thing is, see, they wouldn't have moving rights.
That's right.
Well, that's true.
But we'd lose a lot of money if you don't let them pay for all their life, all their stuff. State would lose a lot of money.
And what we've got, you know, like you mentioned the industrial, when you're looking at like the sugar beet plants, the uh, refinery, um, Cargill, like at Spiritwood, you know, that whole conglomeration there, that's a big tax revenue. Cause that's millions and millions of valuation. And that would be gone. So they did touch on the legality of it. You know, as a council, we cannot hold a informational meeting as a council. But there's nothing that limits us if we're out on the street. If you're a council member, you can speak what your opinion is. There's no feedback or you're not mollying it. But as a fire department, as a, cause we're a political subdivision, ambulance squad, city, we cannot hold a meeting either for or against the illegal.
Well, hopefully people are informed. That's all you can hope for.
You know, that's the biggest problem I see. I was at a farm, this is about two weeks ago. And the guy said, you know, he was in favor of the measure. And I asked him, I said, did you ever look at your tax statement? You know, on the lower left-hand side, it breaks down the city, the, well, like his case, the township. The uh, school, fighter, ambulance. He says, no, I just look at the amount, it's too damn much.
Right.
So.
That's, that's how they're gonna try to sneak it in, you know? They want, it's just pretty bad.
All right. Thanks for going up there, Lauren.
Absolutely.
Take care of what's left there, so.
There was, trying to think, there was a couple other. And by the way, I turned in a sheet.
I already got your two seventy-five back.
Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, you turn it in there, they automatically drop it in our account here. Cause they have our stuff, information, so they already put it right back in our account.
Cause that one session was by the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. And if you're a first time attendee, you gotta fill out this form and then you're supposed to get reimbursed.
Yeah, we got your.
And that's what that was all about.
All right. Cool. I thought that was just for meals, he took Peggy out or something? Two seventy-five for meals?
No, all covered there.
Your bar? No, I guess not, okay.
What, you mean coffee, coffee?
Coffee.
Coffee tab.
He didn't have a hell of a lot of coffee.
He wouldn't have a bar tab, he'd have a coffee tab.
They have water everywhere, but no coffee.
All right, well, everyone have a chance to look at the bills for this month?
When you look at them, you're gonna see the forefront of the law. I paid three of them at the beginning of August, but we were trying to go back, but the one you see for December was kinda not in my folder, so Teresa and I were looking and trying to get it all straight. We are right one straight, I'm getting ready to pay September's now, so now we are all caught, everything's caught up.
Okay.
So she held one to my checks for a month until after we got everything straightened out.
Any other questions or?
Negative.
Not good? Taking a motion to approve bills?
So moved.
Lauren, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, date and time of next meeting, November fourth, at seven, is that worth for everyone?
Yep.
If not, let higher order know.
No problem. Buckles, pen and honey.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thanks, guys.